We're here for. Good evening, everyone. We're here for a budget work session. It is 5:08 PM on the ninth of November, 2021. Our mayor pro tem is en route and asked us to start without her. So let's begin. Michael, I'll leave it with you. I said about 12 words. And they were all nice words. Amazingly enough.
Carry on, Wayne. Carry on.
Just to catch you up, Hillary. Stephanie is delayed on a trip back from being out of town and won't be here, at least for now.
Okay. Okay. Oh, that's who I was going to start with. So. Michael, you're up.
So we. We had a nice, long conversation on Thursday and we decided to come back, I believe. Had ended with Councilmember Neil asking about the Main Street funding and you all. Something after that, but you all were okay eliminating the Main Street funding for 2022.
Mike, I can't hear you.
Can you hear me?
Hello?
So you all were okay with eliminating the Main Street funding for 22? I don't know. Would you all like to have a recap of the decisions that were made last time? Would that be helpful?
Yeah.
Okay. And then the rest of our team can add stuff if I forget things or if I state things incorrectly. Please do that. So we had had discussion about possibly doing a merit based compensation program. There was no number changes to the 22 budget for that. However, staff was going to look at instituting a program beginning part of 22. And then potentially using some of the $100,000 set aside for market adjustments as an incentive. Excuse me. For employees. And if it came back that we needed additional funds after market adjustments. So that we could do merit adjustments, we'd come back to you all for supplemental appropriation at some point in the year. Councilmembers who log had also inquired as to whether it would be more cost effective for the city saving money on interest if we were to pay off Memorial Park debt early. As opposed to sitting on that money until 2026 to prepay the principal on the Woodland Aquatic Center debt. And Aaron has started looking at that. He he touched base with our securities advisor and we found out that. Actually, I'll just ask Aaron. Aaron, can you give us a quick snapshot of what you learned?
Sure. So we are able to prepay the Memorial Park debt, the COP. But it has to be paid all at one time in full. So we can't take the money that we have now and go ahead and prepay it. We would have to wait until we have the full amount of whatever amount that we owe at that time and pay it all at once. And we can do that without any penalty. Otherwise, we'll have to wait until the call date and then do attempt to do a refinance or refunding. But so to answer the first question is we can prepay it off as long as we have all of the funds.
And what's the call date?
So the call date is December of 2025 for both. The COP and the and the bond.
And what's the difference between what is owed now minus what we have are proposing to put aside for the for the debt reduction, including 2022?
Okay, so. At the end of 2022, we would owe to 2,425,000 on the COP. And we will have put aside. Based on our current projections of the 250,000 for 22, we would have 1.1 million 850,000.
So leaves a difference of.
About 600,000.
675, do I get? So we. So it looks like with one more payment, we'd be able to do that. If we if we were able to get the 250 up to 500, there'd be like one payment left. And it might even have a surplus at the end of the year.
So it would be, yeah, we would have to. It'd be another. If we were to go up to $500,000 next year as opposed to the 250, that would still leave another few hundred thousand dollars in 2023 to cover that last bit.
Or it could, but if there is an excess in the budget. With that amount, it's only it's a if you take in 250 off, that's going to leave for 425, looks like would be the.
It's it's possible. You know, where we like to budget relatively conservatively when looking at revenues in the next year.
Yeah.
That's for obvious reasons. That said, there's a pretty wide range of tax projections across our peer cities for next year. I think, Aaron, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we saw some cities that were projecting double digits.
We did.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm not I'm not a fan of that idea, but it what you're saying, what I think I hear you saying is maybe we can stay tuned and see how revenues perform in 22. And if the council chooses to use whatever that surplus would be for the debt. Yeah, I suppose it's possible. You could at the end of 22, you could be in a position to pay it off.
Well, looking at the, what is it, $960,000 of interest on that amortized over that loan? It's pretty attractive to try to see if we could do what we can do fund wise.
I'll just comment that. We we still have three years before the call date and today we're sitting where we are and don't have quite enough money to accomplish that. But maybe in the next year or two, if revenues perform the way the way they have lately, that might resolve itself and present itself to be able to do that. Obviously, we don't have the way we sit. We don't have what we need to in reserve to pay it all off. But it certainly could be a multi-year goal, not just a 22 goal, right?
Yeah. Thanks, Aaron, for doing that.
And so I think the council agreed to go forward with the four police vehicle replacements, but eliminate the maintenance app for those vehicles. Also, we're okay with eliminating the $15,000 for Main Street for next year.
We were also talking about selling those six extra vehicles.
Yeah, correct. I think council members who log, I don't know if we got a consensus from council. I that's okay. I don't think we need one, but we also Kip and I actually kept not me is working on breaking down with the vendor fee. Looks like for 22, that's a fairly complicated process to put all that together. And once, what we would prefer is after the council is done making the changes to the budget. Because that potentially play into that vendor fee, how we break it out and calculate it, we would provide that for you. We did that, excuse me, for the adopted budget document for 2021. On the last page of that document is a vendor fee breakout and we replicate that for 22.
We're talking about the business license?
Sorry, no, no, it's it's the vendor fee, which is the money that initially was refunded back to vendors.
Because you want a breakdown of what it's being spent on.
Yeah, well, we talked last year about that. Yeah.
It's a it's a credit against what their obligation is on a monthly basis or quarterly basis.
It was, yeah.
And we accounted for it separately because that's what the question said. And we made a commitment to do that back when the vendor fee was revoked years, years ago.
The only thing was that it wasn't being shown in the budget. So it was just getting lumped into general fund. And council asked last year that it be defined, yeah.
From an expenditure perspective, the revenue is accounted for separately, always have.
Yeah, the money was always being brought in and it I've spoken to some previous city managers. And it really had been used kind of as a slush fund because when we took the vendor fee give back and went to zero percent back in 1996, so 25 years ago. We lost, there was no ability to give it back to any vendors for the work they performed. So it's literally been as a budget line item that has been tapped into over the years. And last year I thought we had finally resolved how we were going to handle it.
And how was that, Rusty?
Well, it was going to be used for downtown. Let's see, what does the language say? Expenditures for projects in downtown Woodland Park. And we were going to account for what those expenditures were for the downtown this year in 2021.
Right. So do we have those breakdowns? So that's basically the whole.
No, we're trying to provide it for you.
You're going to figure it out. Okay.
Yeah. And I have no doubt that we spend far in excess of that amount, as I understand it, on downtown activities, but we will have. We'll have that table updated.
So basically. What is the recurring replenishment? Because once you go to zero, I mean, there's zero percent is being set aside. Zero percent should be set aside since 1996. So what is being actually collected because it's not supported by the our city, our municipal code any longer? It used to be a three point, let me look at the numbers, 3.3%. 294, then it dropped to 1% in 1995. And then 1996, it went to zero. So there should be no money coming in as a revenue called vendor fee line item that we are now allocating to beautification. It's just the previous money collected, which never had a legal way to hand out was to be accounted for in the beautification. But we should be sitting at $0 to hand out because we have zero percentage to collect.
So previous to this year, and I think it was last year's budget, we decided that it should not be itemized and it should be part of the 2% sales tax because if you do 2% of sales, that is what's collected. We used to reclassify that 3.3% of that collected 2% general fund revenue and also the 1% in the in the 410 fund. And count for it in a separate line item. We decided as a council that that was misleading last year. And so it is not a line item in our budget this year. And I think we eliminated it last year, if I remember correctly, but for all those years since it was ratcheted down, we did account for 3.3% in a separate line item of the total 2% collected. So that we, because the ordinance asked for it, the question asked for it. And that was an interpretation at the time. And now we have decided as a council that that was misleading and we don't do that anymore.
So Kelly, I think that's a very accurate portrayal of what we discussed last year.
Yes. We had quite a lengthy discussion that it seemed to be misleading. And so it's not shown in the rep in the revenue line items any longer, but it was for as long as I worked here. And before. It is, which is what it is.
I think what I recall, and you know, I don't remember exactly, but what I thought the essence of of the whole vendor fee was that the business owners were complaining that the vendor fee wasn't shown anywhere. So they were giving their money back in terms of this 3.3%, which on a on a state level and a county level is given back. And they wanted to see where that money was, how much that was, and then that should be allocated towards downtown projects. I thought that's where we were with it and I'm, I don't think we were trying to make it go away. We recognize that the vendor, we weren't going to, we didn't vote that for the vendors to receive that money back, but we did. I thought we said that we were going to allocate those funds, which in kind funds towards projects downtown and we would identify that that's what they were spent on. And I think that was the big push and that they were happy with. Now, did I miss something in that, Kelly, in what you're in what you're saying here?
Well. It was just simply a reclassification. It wasn't, we get 2% sales tax. Period. Right? And way back when the it was the vendor fee went away and it wasn't all the businesses. It was a few businesses that came to the council. And the council had, and I don't remember exactly, but I do remember that we did come to the conclusion that the vendor fee line item would be accounted for where it belonged. And I think Rusty, you agreed with me. And I do think that the intention was for us to invest in beautification, et cetera. And I'd have to go back and listen because it's been a while exactly what the words were, but I do specifically remember that we decided as a group that we've no longer identified those and and call attention to those. Not that we weren't not lack of transparency. It just was a proper accounting to account for 100% of our 2% in that line item. So that we knew exactly what the sales tax was. We call if it's a, what do they call it? If it's a something, call it that. Don't call it something else. I can't remember the adage. It's left me, but it's pretty funny. Anyway. We decided that it was misleading. It was just an accounting. It wasn't meaningful and that we wanted it to be back in the and mirrored in the 1% fund as well, the 410 fund. Plus, that's my recollection. I know we had agreed to spend it on some certain investments in our, I don't know, the downtown corridor or something. But we can certainly research it and find out. It's all online. And see what exactly we we came to conclude out of that.
So and we and.
I think it's in the charter, isn't it? I think that's a reasonable justification. It was in in the agreement, however, it was that this was to be this vendor fee was to be given or kept by the city. It I thought it was, there was an agreement about language about that. It wasn't just a word of mouth. There was actual reason. I think that's why the business community was frustrated about it because they they had willingly said, okay, if you're going to spend it on downtown, that's great. But it was never shown that it was spent downtown and.
And so, and you're right. So a couple of points on that. It's in the city code.
It's 3.08.370.
Section perfect for us.
What is it, Rusty? Say it again, if you would. And do you have it in front of you there, Rusty?
I do.
I should just read it.
Well, the vendor's fee was retained. I'm going to paraphrase the original purposes retained by the licensed vendor to compensate them for expenses occurring, collecting and remitting the city sales. Now, if they only filed use tax, they were not entitled to it, but in you have paragraph A, which says, effective December 31, 1994, the vendor's fee retained was going to be 3.3%. But then in January 1, 1995, the municipal code was updated so that the 3.3% was decreased to 1%. And then on January 1, 1996, and thereafter, licensed vendors shall not be entitled to any city vendors fee. Paragraph D was added to try to account for, okay, if we can't give it back to the vendors, what what happens to the money that should theoretically still be sitting there since we can't give it back, even though it was collected? And that's when D was added. Money is derived by the city as a result of the decline and ultimate elimination of the city's vendors fees shall be dedicated to expenditures for projects in downtown Woodland Park. That accounting for those expenditures had never taken place. And we were trying to just close out the books on vendor fee by showing the final accounting on whatever was still left in the vendor fee line so that it goes to zero. It's never replenished going forward. And starting this year theoretically, this should all be a moot point. It doesn't exist anymore.
I agree, Rusty. Michael has information that will be very helpful.
So in the 2021 budget, and I only have a copy. It's very small. I can't show you. I'm sorry. But there is a table, the very last page. Thank you. There's a table on the very last page of the 21 adopted budget book that shows 2021 planned downtown improvement slash maintenance. And our former public works director, Robin Brown, had put this together with not a small amount of effort. And the idea would be, I think, what Kip and I were working on is replicating that for the 22 budget. But we had not put that together for the proposed budget. Apologies for that. But we can certainly do that for the adopted budget. Once it's settled and we can show, you know, it's it's the two block, basically two blocks off of 24 and 67 going up to Red Feather. And then that equates to like 0.88 square miles of the city of our 6.6 square mile city. And then you get kind of a ratio and and that's, I believe, how Robin put this analysis together last year. We could do the same thing. It's it's fine. But I just have a question for council, council member Neil, and that is were you of the impression there was some fund with a finite amount of money in it that's been depleted?
It should be. Two years ago, I did a lot of research with the previous finance director. And there was money that had been set aside as the vendor fee, you know, it was that 3.3 or 1 or by the by the charter, there was no authority to set it aside, but they had been by word of mouth, setting aside 3.3% of the 2% sales tax. So that was that money was there in a line item and and that's when she admitted that that was it could not be given back to the vendors. While it was set aside in a line item, it could never be given back because the distribution algorithm went to zero. So it's been sitting there and the city had used it kind of as a slush line item. But I think that was the what raised some ire and I agree with Robert. We wanted to see a final accounting of where, because it does say it's supposed to be used for expenditures for projects in downtown Woodland Park. I know I was hoping to see the final expenditures as that money was finally closed out in that line item. And then the line item literally goes away.
I can I can tell you that it is not set aside and it is not a slush fund. It is a revenue line item in the general fund revenues. And if it isn't, and if the revenues in the general fund remain net of expenditures in the general fund are positive, it is closed to fund balance every year. Revenues and expenses close every year to fund balance. And so if if there are not identifiable expenditures to identify as being used from the vendor fee, which is a horrible name. It's not a fee. It's a reclassification of of sales tax revenue. It closes to the fund balance. And it's available for future spending in future years. Just like the 2% sales tax or the property tax or any other revenue line item in the general fund. It is a general fund revenue and is available to spend on appropriate expenditures in the general fund. Or it closes to fund balance.
So if I could just interject for one moment, if council wants to go back and look, we had two work sessions. I've just pulled them up. Of course, there's no minutes to work session. So you actually have to go back and you have to listen to them. We had a work session on August 27 of.
2020.
2020. And then we had a work session on 9/24 of 2020. Both topics are on the agenda. Business fees and vendor fees, business, both of those are on there. So we'd have to go back and listen to the recordings because there's no minutes. So if anyone's interested, thank you, Susan.
I just don't want mischaracterization of revenues. And and the characterization that it's some kind of funny money or slush fund because couldn't be anything further than from the truth.
And Kelly, I'm just, I'm just using the words that our previous finance director actually told me. She said she used as a.
I understand. Okay. Obviously, she didn't know what she was talking about, but thank you.
As long as whatever was left over rolled into it, you know.
Absolutely. Every single year.
Yeah, but we should not be replenishing it now because it's at 0% of the of the 2%. So by my math, zero times anything.
That was intention.
Yes.
Are we reading this 0% thing backwards, though?
No.
Okay.
It was reduced. We just accounted for it for a long, long time after it went away.
Right.
And now we're not doing it anymore. And so it's really except for the fact that the council would like to know where those are being spent because of the nature of that. And the decision that the council wanted to do that. They really are not a part of the budget any longer, other than being a general fund in the 2% line item and the 1% line item in 410 fund, from my perspective.
I just think this can be a very confusing topic.
I agree, and we've hashed it out about 150 times.
Yeah. So I think we can sum sum it up then by saying, yes, they would still like an accounting. So in the way that you're recommending.
And don't make it any more difficult than it has to be, please.
We're going to try and basically update what Robin put together for last year.
That's fine.
But before we hopefully move off the topic, is it council's understanding that there's a certain percentage still that equates? Okay. All right.
Not from my perspective, anyway.
Yeah, I don't see it in this section of the code. I'm not reading it that way.
No.
Okay. Yeah, we can. We can still do that analysis. Well, we're working on it. It takes a little bit of time.
From my perspective, the only reason that we want to be tracking this is because I thought last year we got to the point where like, okay, business owners are happy that we're we're allocating it in a specific way. What it was in this past part, I don't recall that at all, but the point is, is that when we present this budget, that they have a sense that, yes, we've done what that we promised we do. That's basically what, you know, that's my only comment about this.
Yeah. Valid.
Yeah. Yep. And just, we are putting more money in the budget in 22 relative to 21 for that sort of thing. Like we increased the beautification budget. We increased, there was additional personnel to help clean up the area in downtown to make repairs there to do that very thing. On page 97 of your 22 proposed budget, it'll break down the lodging tax fund. And obviously lodging tax is not general fund sales. And obviously lodging tax is not general fund sales tax. But you get an idea of the amount of stuff that's going from lodging tax to maintaining that downtown area, especially looking at streetlights, looking at beautification, advertising for businesses downtown, keep Woodland Park beautiful, historic preservation. A lot of that stuff is concentrated in the downtown area. So just on an anecdotal level for right now, there's there's plenty of resources that are going toward that area. But we will provide a little bit more detailed understanding of what that looks like.
So since you brought up the lodging tax, can I just ask a quick question? What's the line item or what's the funding for Keep Woodland Park Beautiful? I mean, do we? Because that's we don't fund other committees, right? We don't fund other other than historical?
I'm trying to remember what's what's in that one. They did ask for money to rent trash cans because they were not
Okay.
being provided anymore. That's part of it.
Okay.
And it has to, I think it has to do with their cleanup days. Cindy, do you know more?
I don't know for a fact, but I was going to say their cleanup days have some expenses as well.
Okay, all right. That's great. Thank you, guys.
What else you got?
Just on that, just on that one point, I had spoken about the idea of doing some sort of pool of funds for community projects that they wanted to do. And I talked about doing something collectively between Keep Woodland Park Beautiful, Main Street, DDA, Historical Society. Are we looking to do that at all? Are we looking to have a place where they can have a go to if they want to do a project together that is of benefit for the community?
There's nothing set aside in here. I know you had mentioned that to me. We we have funds to do that. The only one of those groups that I recall hearing from at all in terms of wanting funds was Main Street. Obviously, they're not interested right now and they're going to be retrenching next year overall. But I don't know if the interest level from the other organizations you've mentioned. We we could appropriate a pool of money and then put together an application process and like a revolving fund or some by grant match. We talked about that a little bit, but as of right now, that's not in there.
Seems like if we did, and I'm not saying we have to do it. I'm just saying if we did it, seems to me that would open the door to things like DOLA and other grant matches for stuff like that.
It could. Yeah, I don't know what else is out there outside of the main, again, the Main Street piece. And so, yeah, Main Street does have the ability to leverage city money into DOLA additional grant funds. I can't speak for any other organizations.
I don't know, but the historic historic preservation have any?
They have a trust fund where they have cash that was set aside about 150,000 years ago. And
Great Grandpa's Day.
Yeah. And those monies earn interest. And I don't know that we have those agency and trust funds in the budget. Oftentimes, we don't because they just spend so rarely. So usually, the way we handle that is if the Historic Society wanted to use some of those revenues and interest earnings off of that protected trust money, that they would come and ask for that if they had a special project that they wanted to do. So
Go ahead.
Yes. No, I'm finished. Go ahead.
I was going to say, since you mentioned that I opened up my Historic Preservation Committee budget and I see a line item, I don't know what SHF survey grant.
Yeah.
Okay, that was, there was zero this year. Now, that looks like a grant versus an interest into it, so.
That's the State Historical Society, State Historic Foundation.
Okay.
They've issued grants to us for very specific projects over the years.
I'll get with Sally because I don't see anything in my notes on any other revenue other than the $2,800 that they got.
Yeah. She would be a good person to download because she's got all that in her head.
Yeah.
I have a question. I've noticed there's something missing. It's very important in our general fund budget, and that's our city clerk, Department 1112. There's nothing here. And I know we have an election this year and we have Sally.
You're correct. And that's in our haste of putting the budget together, that was missed. And my city clerk does not fail 16 times. Remind me of that.
Well, I noticed it. So I asked her if maybe she was grouped into something else. And I just wanted to be sure because the election is what brought it to my attention.
Yep.
So can we add the clerk back in?
I got really nervous when it was left out. I thought they were trying to tell me something.
It's an important function.
On our on our list of things to fix for the adopted book.
Thank you. You know what? Stuff happens. It's a very complex document. And it happens. So that's why that's why we have the ability to do supplementals.
Right. And so on page 36 of the pages that are there, there is a $30,000 line item for the election for 22. So the detail is not there for the right, but the ad for the elections.
Thank you.
Yes.
Appreciate you.
30,000, 30,000, right?
You're welcome, Sees. I got you.
30, 30, 30. 30,000, yeah, I see it.
I'm sure she'd like to get paid too next year. And the and the codification and all the record storage and all those good things that the clerk does for us.
Has HR now, so we want to make sure HR is on there, too.
You bet. Thank you.
Yes.
One simple. Did we get Aaron in here? Is he still with us? Yeah, there's Aaron.
Yeah, I'm here.
Thank you. I'm glad you're here.
I have a question for the chief under Police Department 56. Last year or this year, should I say earlier this year, your predecessor, Miles, was facilitating a study on a joint dispatch with Teller County. They spent a bunch of money on it. And I don't know what the finding has been on that. And how does that then affect telecommunications and and the budget item that we have for dispatch? Do you have results you can talk about yet or where is it?
Yeah, I mean, it's still ongoing. And city manager myself have been discussing it currently where it stands is we were informed that Cripple Creek did not want to be part of this regionalization. So we're looking to see how that affects the overall thing. But from my perspective, I believe that it was funded through the 911 authority.
It was, yes.
Yeah. El Paso 911, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
So we still
The study was, but so implementation, is there any discussion about that yet?
None, no.
No, the 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 study is complete. It's a draft form. We're reviewing it right now. We're going to get a briefing next week or two, I feel like, from the company. But as Chief Hazler mentioned, there's there's three agencies that are involved in that conversation, one of them being Cripple Creek. Cripple Creek appears to no longer be interested. The the company who conducted the study is still interested in coming and talking to us. I'm quite curious as to what that might look like now, but for, yeah, right now, it's still in process.
Right. And from there, it would then go to you talk with Teller County or where's what's what's the sequence of steps? And is it is it a concern for us budget budget wise in terms of implementation for this 2022 cycle? Do we need to have it on the radar? And if so, what would that look like?
My thought is that even the best of circumstances, even if this made a lot, a lot of sense for Woodland Park and the Teller County Sheriff and Cripple Creek, it would be some time, I think, even before Cripple Creek pulled out, there was anticipated some lead time for implementation. This is just the initial feasibility study. I believe there would be a separate phase as to how that structure would look, which is a whole other ball of wax. And so that's that's going to be several years lead time before it would have an impact on our budget document.
Okay.
It's a good question.
Yeah.
Anything else? I know Robert.
Rob, can you try to promote Sally to a panelist?
What was that recipe? I'm sorry.
Sally's trying to be promoted to a panelist. I think she may have had some information. I just saw her request.
Okay, give us a second. We'll get her in. Thanks, Cindy.
Her promoted to backup AV.
So Sally, are you here? Did you have something you'd like to add?
Thank you. Yes, I just when council member Nakai brought up the Keep Woodland Park Beautiful, that is a committee that is sanctioned by the city council. You make appointments to the Keep Woodland Park Beautiful. It's very different than Main Street or the Historical Society, which are separate nonprofit organizations. So that is why the Keep Woodland Park Beautiful has a line item budgeted in the city because it is a sanctioned committee by the city council as well as the Historical Preservation Committee, which has enabling legislation associated with the state and the federal government. And that enabling legislation, it occurs in section 2.44 of the municipal court code. So I just wanted to make that distinction.
Sally, do either of those committees, Keep Woodland Park Beautiful or Historical Society have paid staff from from the city? Is there a city employee or sees that or spends any of their job time on those two boards?
Yes, so Keep Woodland Park Beautiful, right now, Rob Feltz is the staff liaison. And he helps with their meetings and their programs and events. And then the Historical Preservation Committee is staffed by myself and Dory Slaughter, who helps with the minutes. So there is a very small amount of staff time that is dedicated to those two committees.
Thanks. Now, do we allocate dollar amounts for that staff time? Or is that just kind of an in-kind thing or just a?
No, that's, yeah, that's part of their regular job description.
Okay. All right.
Their liaisons.
Thank you for elevating me.
And Sally, I have one more question for you, seeing you're on the line. And that is under the general fund, street lighting. I think that was you, isn't it? Is street lighting you? Oh, it's Kip.
No, it's Public Works.
All right, very good. Well, we had had some conversation about street lighting and I don't know new technology or something in it. Is that what we're looking to do with where they can track your cell phone and or track locators and stuff? Is that part of that?
No. This is just replacement of old poles and switching to LED lights.
Oh, so there's not an electronic component that for traffic or whatever else involved with it?
No, sir.
I think you mean a Wi-Fi component.
Oh.
Wi-Fi boosters.
Yeah, yeah, something like that.
Yeah, so, yeah, there there's street lights that have technology in it that can do anything you want.
Right.
If you'd like to talk more about it, I spent a lot of time in my previous role thinking about that.
Oh. So so this is just general street lighting, LED, so less cost for maintenance, for operations or whatever, separate.
Yep, in replacement of old poles, they're deteriorating quite rapidly.
And the ones that catch cars. Because they're car catchers.
They are.
Very regularly.
And we own our streets, street lights, right?
Correct.
Okay. And that's a plus for us, better that we own rather than somebody else on them.
Well, we 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 are the ones downtown, right?
Well, not the the signal lights, just the pedestal lights.
The pedestal lights, yeah, yeah.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, yes, I mean, we're we're going to be the ones that operate and maintain those.
Okay. And what percentage of the number of pedestal lights are we replacing for the $75,000?
Oh, boy, you had to ask me that.
A percentage would work.
Yeah, I'm not even sure the total number. It's about $5,000 a pole and there is a bunch of them. If I were to guess, there's probably
There's a million of them.
70 to 80 poles. So this is about six, so not even 10%.
Okay. So this is going to be ongoing over the next 10 years, is that basically the
Forever.
Plans?
Forever.
Forever. Because then they're going to need them again.
Right now, we have a whole bank out as well. So we're trying to diagnose what's going on with that entire bank. So in front of the Dinosaur Resource Center, we're having trouble with that whole side. So this will cover some of those costs as well.
Okay. Right, thanks.
Rusty, do you have anything else?
Well, I'm hoping that we will eventually talk about the 215 fund, Downtown Development Authority.
Okay.
I know that we were going to let all the 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 non-male council members, since Robert and I kind of jeopardized it last time. And I was just kind of sitting back.
Well, I'm sorry, I was going to give Stephanie the opportunity to start. She isn't here yet. And then Catherine and Kelly said they didn't quite have anything just yet, so.
Okay.
It's your guys' show again.
But the one thing I did want to bring up with the DDA, I did not participate in the discussions there nor voting because I wanted to preserve my ability to discuss and vote when it came to council. They've made some line items that I I would like to discuss. The biggest one is the the lack of a capital line when they approved the 3.5K, the 3,000, 3,500. The budget was kind of approved and then they later on approved the $3,500 for the interpretive panel. They were going to, I'm sorry, the abatement of the asbestos. And I sent an email out hoping that they would do a special meeting so that they could identify where the line item was supposed to be. I think council had asked for that. That never occurred. So there's one line I would like to see changed, which would be the 215 dash 710 dash 7400, which is the capital outline. I think that's where the $3,500 should be. We should have the appropriation listed there. And if that's not the correct one, I would turn to Erin or Kelly to guide guide us into where that was recognized. And then the second thing, the professional services, they had allocated 10,000 or they've requested $10,000. I think that was prior to them doing the the math on the salary of their newly hired admin assistant. They have approved a $20 an hour salary. And at 10 hours per week, I think the $10,000 is not enough. Erin, I think you could probably do the math real quick. 10 times 52 weeks is, you know, 520 times $20 an hour. 10, we're going to be shy just a little bit with the $10,000. So I think we should discuss bringing that up to the correct multiplication of that person's salary. And then the the last thing is they had a legal services line item when they did have an attorney representing them. They terminated the arrangements with the city attorney and have and have made the decision they'll they'll get an attorney when they have a a project that's starting to move forward. So I would like to see the legal services line item zeroed out until they come to the city council with both a project and a need for a city attorney or not a city attorney, a downtown development attorney to take that project that's approved by both the DDA and the city council for.
Well, I I just like to just point something out and it's really just housekeeping and and it can have legal consequences. She's a contractor, she's not salaried, so it would be professional services. And that math is $10,400.
So the $10,000 professional services line should be 10,400.
400, correct.
Yeah.
Robert, go ahead.
Yeah, Rusty, I'm a little bit uncomfortable with you coming suggesting their budget changes when they haven't voted for it as a board. So I don't know that it's our purview to go and make these changes.
Yeah, I think sureness. Well, it is, but also I think given that we have a small amount of time, when is their next meeting? Because they should probably revisit this December. Not till December.
Scheduled until their regular meeting on Yeah.
Also, either we have to fix it for them. Meeting.
Yeah.
So.
If they have to do amendment later, that's what they have to do, you know, so. I don't think we can make it on their behalf, though. That doesn't sound right. We appropriated it?
Yes, appropriate. We can, silly, not the only, but it is the major oversight council has over the DDA legally. So are the funds. So if we need to make it 10,400, we can. So that the math is correct. And if there are other adjustments, but they should I just think they should at least try to get together and meet to understand their budget before that happens. But it's not a big deal to correct something that is actually giving them more and not taking something away.
Right, and not only correcting it by $400.
Right.
Right, so for the professional services.
And then 3,500.
And then 3,500 is, I think, you know.
They need to figure out where they want to.
Where they want to put that, but.
I I would say that it is not a capital expense. Our our capitalization threshold is $5,000 or greater. So it is a period expense and so it belongs under the operating expenditures.
I I stand corrected then. Thank you, Kelly.
Just just, it's just housekeeping.
Yep. And if anybody had a question about why they had gone from the 2,000 up to 12,000 for beautification, I I can talk to that. I did not participate, but they would like to have some amount of money so that they can take a look at some other areas that are blighted and have the ability to to do something about it. Their their hands are limited right now. So I would support that that would be in the beautification line item.
Sure. For the 3,500, though, to go to the abatement, where does that come from? Because since it wasn't in in here.
Where would you put it?
That that would be appropriated from fund balance. That'd be an incremental change, the way I understood it.
21 expense or 22 expense? 22, okay. Rusty, that's right, isn't it? For the abatement, it would be the 22 expense.
Correct.
Okay. It could come out of beautification.
Yeah.
Makes sense.
And then just because the account doesn't exist under the DDA budget right now, doesn't mean, I mean, we have
Can't.
You know, hundreds of codes. Aaron, if he hasn't already, could probably look up from our list of accounts, charted accounts, a construction services or running being asbestos mitigation line in there somewhere. I don't know. But I I I would imagine that Aaron could find a an account that is suitable that will be standalone with nothing else in it, so you could easily identify it.
Sure. And then, but council, before we do the 3,500, do we all agree to match the 3,500 for the total of 7,000 for the abatement? Cause that's what they're asking us for. And remind me what the what building that is?
That's the the.
The train station.
Yeah. I don't have a problem.
Yeah, I don't either.
They've already put on the new roof. The next phase is the asbestos abatement before they can then start working on the interior redesign.
Okay.
Any other appropriations are coming for where on that abatement?
Well, we have the $5,000 coming from the Newmer, Newmont Mind. It's a grant. The total price for the effort is $12,000, Robert. So that would leave 7,000 unaccounted for. The DDA would be providing 3,500 and then the city 3,500, which would account for the full 12.
And so, Michael, where's the city's 3,500 portion of this coming from?
So that would be, you you have some savings.
Council expense.
You could do that at council expense. You've cut a few bucks from the budget already. You've cut $20,000, so it would just go on the wash against that.
Could come out of what we were going to put for the D for the Main Street. Okay.
Main Street, and I think there was a the maintenance cost remained constant, so. There were a couple bucks would have been because we did decide to go with the four police vehicles.
Right, right. Okay, so I
So I don't personally have a problem leaving the 12.5 in the legal services, because if they don't use it, they don't use it. And they don't, I mean, they don't have an attorney, so they're not going to spend it until they get an attorney.
Right.
I don't care. I can go either way. I don't, I don't care if consensus is take it out, we can take it out.
You're going to need an attorney.
I agree. Well, and as I've always said, they can always ask for supplemental appropriation. That is a very common thing. I'm okay with it and and I'll say why, because I I've been attending the meetings and I've observed a whole new dynamic on that board and a very strong in sense of responsible and planned. I I'm impressed with what I see. I think we've done a great job with our appointments, council, and I congratulate you. So I don't have a problem with that because I have the confidence that they're not going to spend it without the board approving it. The expenditure, they made a a policy change at their last meeting that access to the attorney would have to be approved by the board of directors and not just by an individual. So that gives me more comfort in that being handled properly. Okay, so I think I'm hearing there's consensus to match 3,500. And we will keep the legal fee as is. And then, did we say where their 3,500 is coming from or do we care? Michael's going to find an appropriate line. Michael and Aaron are going to find an appropriate.
If the council and and DDA can trust us to find the right account. Like you said, I know there's a construction services line. I just can't remember what number it is off.
That's fine.
But we can create a new account within the DDA budget to do that.
And and just so the council knows, I'm trying to make this a forcing function. I asked for a special meeting so that they could have a very quick, let's finish up the DDA's budget, and I didn't get a single response back from any of the DDA members. Since I don't participate in the discussions or voting at the DDA level, this is my only way of trying to fix the budget with their knowledge and final approval on both sides, theirs and ours.
Right. Oh, and we need to add the 400 for the 10,000. And that's just a math thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I'm sure Rebecca will be thankful for that.
So where would the council want the $3,500 to be budgeted? Or the general fund side? Is it okay if it's in the, we will do additional incremental appropriation, but I mean, we can, we can always for something like this, it's nice to have it segregated into its own account for transparency. And we could certainly put it in beautification. We 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 would presumably use the same, what I might propose is putting it in the council budget under whatever that same account may use for DDA. Construction services, for example.
Sure.
We'd footnote it as such.
Yeah.
So.
We also have funds that we didn't appropriate, as far as I know, this year for the visitor center. So it's kind of in that same league in terms of, because that is, when that is when the asbestos is remediated, that will become a public access building, won't it?
Yeah, yeah, good point, Robert.
I would imagine so. And the visitor center and the money, I I think it's in the city managers.
It's in department 199.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm looking at it.
Thank you.
Where is it?
199, page 49.
It's non-departmental. We 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 could do that as well.
There's a non-city property repairs. Is it a city property? It is.
And I guess in that same vein, every time I go up to the Tava, the Tava bench up there, there's this ugly piece of of deteriorating plywood on the seat. Who's say is it about tidying that thing up so that when people go there and look, it looks like a a real artifact?
So in planning, there's a Historic Preservation Committee line item. I know that's really supposed to be the committee, but isn't that a historic building?
Is it? Is it historic that Tava? I thought it was.
And there's a time capsule embedded in the the bench itself. Sally could probably tell us all about it. I even know what's in it.
We used to have the old. Remember when the calaboose was across the street? It was full of the all the bicycles that the police found that were stolen.
To the right of the amphitheater.
Yeah. I've been on the cleanup twice and two times it's it looks the same way. I'm like, why do we don't fix this? You didn't know it was there.
As long as Sally's comfortable with that. Are you still online, Sally?
Yes, I am.
Is that building historic, the asbestos?
Yes, it is. It's locally landmarked.
So would that be an appropriate line item, Sally, and for the historic preservation?
Certainly could be added to the his historic preservation lineup.
I should have heard Cindy about two minutes ago.
What'd she say?
Put it there.
Speak up, Cindy, speak up.
It's not my job to find a place. That's my old job.
Well, 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 I mean, it's clear this council is is concerned with this. We want to make sure we get where you want it.
Classified where it needs, where it makes the most sense.
Okey dokey.
What did you say?
The Historic Preservation Committee.
And you can find it later.
Line item. It's in 114. It's in the planning.
Going to assume that the Preservation Committee is going to be responsible for spending.
It's their project.
It is their project?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Oh, good. That's where it goes.
Then let's do that.
Then you'll be able to find it next time if someone asks you about it.
Robert?
I don't have any more questions. I just have one general one and that is with regards to pass-through funds that we collect for the for the school. Does, am I right in understanding that there's about a half a million dollars of the increased revenues are just being passed through to the school?
A a half million dollars?
It looks like 551, 459 or something. In terms of increased revenues and increased expenditure pass-through, so the extra 2 million or whatever, really, a quarter of that is just going to the school. I say just, meaning it's not really.
Right, so it's
The difference, the difference from last year.
Oh, the difference?
Yeah.
Yeah, the budget's going up a little less than 500, or a little less than $600,000.
Right.
Yeah. That's page 27. GL code 100 triple zero 3132.
Page 22, I have that on page 49.
That's projected.
You're the expense side.
That's projected, I'm here for 22, yeah.
Oh, you're looking at the income side?
Streets fund goes up.
Education.
The district.
Yeah, yeah, that's the same.
Yeah.
Yep.
They net zero.
So the answer is yes. So when, I'm just thinking, one of our community members was screaming that our budget's gone up 2 million. There's a a quarter of it right there.
Yeah, it's it's important to remember on the the 13 something million dollar general fund budget, that 3 million of that is is not our money.
Is not our money, right?
About almost another million of it is for debt service, just goes right in, right back out.
Which is exactly why I like to pay off the park. All right, very good.
Rusty, do you have anything else?
I just have one last question. And it's on page 92 in the budget. It's in the grants fund. Michael, if you could just kind of talk everyone through what this is. It's under the operating expenditures. It's the 210 4240 line parks maintenance where we have a $167,000 entry. It's brand new this year. If you could just talk, talk everyone through that.
Right, and that's that's the money coming from the American Rescue Plan dollars. And I could, I could ask what goes into that. He put that number together.
Give me a second, I can pull it up.
Processing.
So we found an allocation that doesn't fog the mirror? Is that what you're saying?
167 is
167,000, yeah.
On in our presentation they gave us.
If I remember correctly, you are correct, Kelly. It's just there's no footnote in there. Like they have footnoted so many other things. That that was the only thing that when I was flipping through, it didn't click right away until Michael just said that.
We we can add a footnote.
Just a footnote, so that when any citizen looks at the line and sees, it goes from zero for across all time and then all of a sudden 167,000, it it was the last thing that caught my eye and I just wondered.
Yeah. It's the grant money.
I would recommend any allocation you have like that potentially footnoted in the budget, so people understand it's not Woodland Park tax revenue. It is the American Rescue Plan dollars.
And more importantly, that we get it basically that money two years and then we we should have no expectation that that would be possible, a third, fourth, fifth, you know, out into the future. Just to set expectations for future budgeting.
Right.
So we we can, we can spend it up through 2024. I mean, you're you're right, you're right, council member Neil, you're absolutely right. And we can spend it up through 2024. That it can actually be spent up through 2026, so long as you're it's been programmed by the end of 2024, is the way I understand it. And Aaron can correct me if I'm wrong. But yeah, we we can footnote the rescue plan dollars. I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful.
That was actually the last line, Kelly. I had a bunch of little nitty-gritty things, but it's just not worth the time and energy. Cause I know there's a good explanation on a lot of them. And I met the the big one that I wanted to hear a little bit about was what Kip talked to me about regarding the reservoir, the reservoir. I'm very.
Again. Okay.
So you're good with that, Rusty?
I am right now. And if you've spoken with him, you know that nothing's going to happen anytime soon as we go through the legal discussions. And you know, it was being brought up to speed on it.
Yeah, he also, thank you, Kip brought me up to speed on it. I guess my question is, is it is it something that we are realistically looking at breaking ground on or engineering ground on within the year 2022? Or is it still too much undecided?
All depends on my time and council's decision.
Well, doesn't it also contingent on a contract that's Well, doesn't it also contingent on a contract that's viable?
That's the negotiations council will have with the land, for the land.
Oh, okay. And you think that will happen in twenty twenty-two?
I thought it would happen for the last three years. Okay.
I was going to say, we need to let Nina review the legal challenges ahead, and maybe we could separately ask her, Robert. Because if I were to wet my finger and put in the air, having listened to what she would have to overcome, I would say you're doing well to say fifty-fifty chance. I think it's probably ninety percent chance that this would occur in twenty twenty-three.
So that's, and that's kind of where I'm going with my, by asking you this, is should we really even appropriate a million dollars in the budget this year for that? Or just keep it, keep it in reserve? And then if it does come through, then do a supplemental on it? Introduce it and introduce a contract and go forward that way? Is there a pros, pros and cons to leave it out of the budget at this point?
It, it, it's not going to be spent unless it's going forward. It would just, it would just be a different number in the, the water budget. Going, doing a supplemental appropriation just takes, you know, it takes a month. Who is that?
That's Rusty. I was going to text him and tell him Heidi was.
What was your question?
What, the pros versus cons of appropriating a million dollars for the reservoir design work or not?
It would take just a little bit more time to get going. I'm of the mindset to, if negotiations are finalized, to go. However, different councils have liked it different ways. I'm want to say, hey, let's go, let's get this moving in some.
Robert, I mean, there, there is a chance. I mean, when I listen to all the things Kip and Nina was taking notes, there is a possibility. It's slim, but there's a possibility. So I think it would probably be wise to go ahead leave it where we, where it was recommended, that million dollars. So that if the negotiations go smoother than what they might, we're ready to start executing something in earnest. Just my.
I think your, I think your dog needs a bone, Rusty.
I'm trying to quiet her down, yep.
That was you texting him?
I think, I think Kip, you'll find the general consensus is leave it where it is.
I mean, the bottom line would look much better if it wasn't there, but bottom line's still very healthy, so.
Yeah.
Right. And that was part of where I was at with it. It's like, if it doesn't need to be there and it changes the, I mean, the funds are still there. It's not like they're not, but I just, it was from the same point of do we really need to make it look like it's there if it's not going to really happen this year? And it's not like we're not going to make it happen. But anyway, it just strikes me that it wouldn't be a disservice to us to remove it at this point. And as you know, once the, once the agreement was going through on it, there'd be a lot of buzz amongst us all to, to get going on it, so.
If we don't spend it, it doesn't go, it doesn't get spent. It goes back to fund balance, which is where it would be anyway. So that's my perspective.
It's kind of just a matter of visualize, visualizing the numbers, you know, really, that's, that's all it is.
Yeah.
Sure.
What's that? Well, it's transparent, but we've just been talking about with the DDA, we're not putting, allocating funds until something's actually happening, so.
But we left it. We left their legal department, their, the legal fees intact.
But we removed the thirty thousand dollars.
Yep. What?
We moved the thirty thousand dollars.
At their decision.
Yeah.
Was their choice.
Well, so I'm saying the same with our decision. It's like, no. It's more, and I don't want to belabor it, simply to say that it's, it's not a project that's, that's shelved already. It's not a project that we're like jumping on here. And it seems to me a little bit, putting it one step a little bit forward, that's not necessary yet.
Sure. And I kind of visualize, the way I see it is it's a way that, that Kip likes to maintain his budget, and he likes to keep that number in there. Because that's how his mind works with his numbers. And so for me, knowing that he has the money and he's not, you know, allocating it inappropriately, and he's always just bookmarking it, because that's how he likes to do it, then that, I'm comfortable with that. You know, because he doesn't want to use it for anything else. So, and this is kind of maybe premature of me to say, but if anything happened to Kip and suddenly we had to bring someone else in, at least I know that money is, is, is bookmarked for that particular project. Because if Kip left and someone else came in, of course, they can redo the budget or re-ask, but as, as it stands, it would be bookmarked for that particular project. And they couldn't just say, oh, I got an extra million. I'm going to hire seventeen more people and do what I want. Not that they would, but I don't know. That's just how I see it visually, so.
Yeah, I'm visual like that also. I like to set it in the right category. And it just tells me it's really not there for other uses. Because we just put it over in the general fund, before long we'll be saying, oh, look, we do have enough to pay off the memorial park, and we just use the reservoirs funds. So it's just saving.
That wouldn't happen. That's an enterprise fund.
Yeah, we're not crossing funds, but yes, same principle. So, yeah. So. Is there anything else?
For me, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I know that Stephanie had wanted to introduce the issue of reducing the mill levy. I also know there is not a consensus to do that at this time, so I think we could probably just save everyone's time with the discussion. If she ever wants to bring it back to the agenda or have that discussion with any one of us individually, she's welcome to. So I see, I see your wheel turning a little over there, so go for it.
Well, the only comment about it would be that, that was her one request about this session. And then I guess the question would be for Aaron or for Michael, what would that look like? If that, if a number was plugged in there on the mill rate reduction? And, and how would that impact the budget? And I'm thinking, I mean, I can't remember the amount, but let's say one point five seven five mil.
So I think when you and Kip and Alfieri initially brought it up, I, it's been a while since I looked at it. I thought the number was one and a quarter, one point two five. So that, I believe that number would be a hundred and eighty, about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars in year one, obviously that goes up as property tax would organically increase over time.
And our excess budget projected revenues for for twenty twenty-one is one point, how many million? One point five, one point four, what is it?
Ask Aaron. Can't remember. Aaron, do you have the answer to that?
Hold on, I'll have it in a minute here. I gotta, I gotta look here.
What was the, what's the projected year-end fund balance for twenty twenty-one?
We're like, you want fund balance or do you want revenue?
Uh, revenues.
So I think, I think you might be asking two different things.
I think so.
So are, are you, are you wanting to know what, what our fund balance is going to be at the end of twenty twenty-one, what the surplus is at the end of twenty twenty-one?
Yeah, so, well, if, if the, if the mill revenue was, was dropped, one point six, one point two-five, one point seven-five, whatever, so it's about a hundred and eighty grand, right? So.
In the first year, yeah.
Right, first year. So my question was, was our excess, anticipated excess revenues just for this year? For, for twenty twenty-one? And I think it's like one point five million or something, isn't it?
It was, yeah, it's something like that. I think that's what Aaron was going to look at.
So what I'm trying to do is say, okay, so if we drop the, if we drop the mill levy by, by one point two-five, one point seven-five, you're talking about a hundred and eighty thousand when you have already a surplus from this year of, of, to the tune of one point five million. That's really a very small amount.
Well, that's true, except it wouldn't go into effect for twenty twenty-one.
Between twenty-two.
Twenty-two.
Right.
And typically, you're not going to find that kind of surplus. These, I've never seen this kind of surplus. In my fifteen budget cycles.
It's a very unusual year.
Yeah.
And so.
One point three seven seven million.
You, you can say that, but.
The difference between revenues and expenditures is one point three seven seven, seven, eight million.
This year.
For twenty twenty-one.
Twenty.
Revenues minus expenditures.
Right. And you had said there was a little more. I thought I, you said that you think that's going to go even a little higher.
It's possible. Yeah, I don't, I don't think we're banking on it yet, but it's possible.
Right, okay.
Yeah, well, obviously we'll know here in about a month and a half.
Okay. All right.
But, and of that money is the one, the additional million dollars that we would suggest to you, we'll finalize it, probably in January, February timeframe, propose to you to put toward that, that, that reserve.
Right.
So. How are we spending it?
I, I just have to say my usual annual spiel that I am, am committed that when the life of the DDA is over and all of the revenues for the DDA are returned to the districts, I would love to have a conversation with all the taxing districts and, and have that conversation about what the mill levies look like. And, and consider something at that point. When you reduce the mill levy, it requires a vote of the people to get that back, if it becomes needed. And I just, I think it's irresponsible. I know our numbers are good, but you never know when they get bad, and I've been through many bads. And I just think that without careful analysis, to just pull a number out of your, you know what, just because it sounds good and it's politically correct, it's dangerous. And I think it requires careful analysis. And I would love to, in ten years or so, see that conversation with the county, the school district, the fire, the police, I mean, fire and the library and all of the taxing districts have that conversation. When, when their revenues are not being interrupted to fund the DDA any longer. I think that's the right time for the conversation and careful analysis. So that we see and we make a good choice based on data, not on politics. Thank you.
Man, you'd think Councilmember Alfieri's ears are burning because just since we've been talking, here's her responses. And they are this. Per the, the per-mill rate is just over a hundred and thirty-four thousand. If we can even knock point seven five mil off the rate, or a hundred thousand down to point fifteen mils even, with two million in reserve, that's reasonable and responsible to citizens. Nailed it. The surplus is not unusual. It is consistent. Average year-over-year tax increase is two hundred thousand. And Kelly, so.
Excuse me, she is not here. She can log in.
She might be actually.
She needs to log in.
Well, she's doing it through me. And Kelly, the last comment is for you.
I call order, mayor pro temp.
We brought up this entire matter for Councilmember Alfieri. Well, she's not, and I'm, I'm bringing it up in her stead. So when Kelly says we need to retain taxes at all costs, I argue, and that's Councilmember Alfieri, I argue, make the government less, live on less they can. I make the argument at the general meeting. She made this argument, so I feel I have brought the issue up. We have discussed it in public, and so where it goes from that, well, we can look at it.
Very good. Thank you, Robert. Council, anything further? Staff, anything you'd like to raise with us?
I may greatly regret bringing this up. It's a good thing. Just, just a little more frame exertion. So I doubt too many folks will remember, and that's totally okay. I had mentioned to you at the beginning of our last meeting on Thursday, there was a number of other changes, things that were overlooked when we were preparing the budget that we caught that we need to take out of the budget. It was a good thing because it actually makes more money available for whatever. It's in the general fund.
For the clerk.
We can buy Suzanne some pencils.
We could set the other two fifty towards debt reduction. Make it five hundred.
That's ridiculous. Suzanne only spends. So.
And pencils, of course.
Well, so here's the thing. So you, there, in, in those changes we, we made, there was about eighty-eight thousand dollars for the general fund that, in projects that should have been taken out that were not. We had to add a few things in for electricity, electricity increase. But you also cut twenty thousand dollars between Main Street and the vehicle maintenance. You had to back thirty-five hundred. But you still have some savings there. You add that together with this eighty-eight thousand, and you have just, just a little over a hundred thousand dollars that you could put towards something, which is interesting because this is the exact project for the Citizens Academy when we do the budget. We have them pretend to be council, and we give them a hundred thousand dollars. I just.
Does that mean you're going to do three academies now?
Well, for a hundred thousand dollars, Grace will be happy to hear I can do a hundred of them. No, but.
Right.
She'd like to go home at some point. Yeah, she probably would like to go home every day.
With, I'd also need to buy her something nice to make that okay, but with the council, I mean, is there something the council would like to do with that? We can just put it to fund balance. We can allocate that toward bumping up the debt service, that reserve by another hundred or whatever, whatever that precisely turns out to be. And so I know that's a curve ball and more stuff to think about. The easy answer is you can put it toward debt, and we can go home, or you can have that conversation as well. I'm not pushing you to make that decision. I'm going.
I think it should go into either the, the undesignated reserve or towards the debt, in my opinion. And, and I'll pick the debt because I know our, our unreserved fund balances is significant. And so I think, you know, I, I just, I, I just have to say that it just is an interesting conversation to be having out of both sides of our mouth that we're dying to come up with money to reduce debt and be ready to, I mean, there's lofty goals of paying it off in twenty twenty-five, which I'm going to hang out and see if that happens. I don't believe it. But I, and, and at the same time, reducing, giving a back revenue that we never would see again. I mean, we could entertain the, the conversation of a rebate, but to, in, in the same conversation, I find that quite interesting. So I would be, I would be in favor of it going towards debt. And then if we find something comes up during the year that we need something that was in, unanticipated, we have a lot of things to work with. In lieu of cash, like maybe doing our funding, our rolling stock replacement program again. It worked slick, and then we didn't have these conversations about all these awful vehicles. We didn't have this problem. And it, it was, it managed itself, and I'd sure like to see that program come back. Self-funding. Replacing our rolling stock and our equipment. Even, we even used it for some projects for grant matches. And it, it just came in really handy. And we've, we've put enough money away that we could manage that again. I could show you how we did it, if you can.
I, I do have a hangfire, a mayor pro temp. Is it possible for a, a simple calculation? If we use the AMI for Woodland Park, and it's really not for Woodland Park, but it's, it's an area median income. I don't think there is one exactly for Woodland Park. I may be wrong, but if there is one for Woodland Park, could we kind of, I would like. if there is one for woodland park, could we kind of, I, I would like to know how many dollars per household? Uh, a mill levy that Stephanie has brought up, and let's use the lesser, the point seven five. How many dollars that would mean to the average household in woodland park? Because if it's, you know, if it turns out it's, it's seventy-five dollars for the average household, yet the amount of money helps us to pay down the debt, it would help me, um, know which direction I would go. Cause I, I would like to see the money go towards debt.
Rusty, it's based on property tax. So it would be the value of your home, your, your valuation of your home and for for a home.
That's true. That's true. Um, yeah.
It's so.
It's not AMI. It's based on the average property.
And like people who rent don't pay a mill levy. It's the people who are the landlords of those properties and things like that. So minus seven dollars. Yeah. So it, it varies significantly by the, uh, cost of your property. So.
So do we have an
Yeah, the assessment.
Do we have an average property value in woodland park? I don't remember ever seeing that line either. What the
Well, we can do, I can tell you what the average sales price of a home Right. in woodland park is, and it's, it's approaching five hundred thousand dollars.
So the mill levy reduction would say.
But I did a quick four hundred thousand dollar calculation on a one point seven five mill levy, seven dollars. But that's, that's not how the mill levy, if it were returned, which it wouldn't be returned. It would be less than that. But that's not how the mill levy benefit would work to the taxpayers. So it would be like seven dollars to Kelly, twelve dollars to me, seventeen to Catherine, it's six dollars to Michael. It's actually six dollars, you know?
And I don't know, um, if council recalls, uh, city manager Tangeman did that exercise for you last year. He, I think he used the minimum, the average four fifty for a home and then calculated that out. I can find that number. He went through all the brain damage of figuring that out, if you'd like. It was.
Well, and the other thing, yeah, I mean, the other thing he brought up was doing a temporary mill levy reduction for a year. Right. Yes, because council can do that. Council can do that. And then it would automatically go back to the fifteen, seven, five. Right. So you could, if you could calculate how much that hundred thousand dollars would be in a reduced mill levy for a year, that would be another alternative. But I personally think everybody wants to reduce the debt sooner than later, then it should just go to debt service. And, and reducing the mill levy while you're carrying nine million dollars in debt seems a little irresponsible, in my humble opinion.
Agreed. Uh, uh, and, and I'm definitely towards the debt reduction when, when I'm looking at how little that mill levy really uh, puts into the pockets of the homeowners. But I just wanted those numbers, you know, me. So Suzanne, if you could just dig up that one more time, um, don't do anything new. Just pull, pull the old calculation. That's all.
I'll find the presentation and I'll forward it to you.
And the majority of revenue does not come from our property taxes. It comes from the sales taxes. And if you want to look at unfair taxes, the food tax is the unfair tax. So, but that's So we have a base. That's a huge, huge debate. So.
Well, I'm for, if you, Michael, back to your question about the excess, I like, um, council member Nakai and um, case, I, I think put it towards the debt reduction because that's gonna give us a closer number come December of twenty twenty-two to know if we can actually, uh, discharge it at the end of the year. I mean, um, it doesn't seem to me we're too far off at four hundred and twenty-five thousand. Another hundred thousand, that's three hundred and twenty-five. Looks to me like we could, you know, it's, it's pretty close. And then back to the debt service that we're saving on that as well. I mean, that's, when, when you look at at nearly a million dollars in debt service, that's, that's makes it worthwhile to crunch the numbers to find that extra, um, spread of three hundred and four hundred thousand dollars to go, yeah, we can do this. So. Anyway, um, just feedback on your comment. That's
So it sounds to me like there's a consensus to earmark it for debt. So my, my, my opinion would be to hang on to it for a while until we knew there was a potential that we needed it for a particular project or something, but but yeah, so, but, uh, so far it sounds like consensus to earmark for debt. So.
Yeah, we, and we do have a, a, a healthy, uh, undesigned unrestricted fund balance. Um, after getting more current numbers, uh, Aaron tells me it's back up at that twenty-seven percent.
Wow.
So you have, in, in the event of that rainy day event, you will be, will be in good shape.
I don't, I don't like to be a rainy day. It'll be a fire. Yeah.
Fiery day. That doesn't sound good.
No, it doesn't.
Michael, could you say it again? The twenty-seven percent that dipped down to twenty-four point six, I think it was. Are you saying that it's actually back up to twenty-seven?
I think so. And is that right, Aaron?
It is. It is. The, the main, the main difference that we had was that we got the twenty twenty audited fund balance back and it was a hundred and fifty, I believe, eight thousand dollars more than we had anticipated. So that, that care, that carryover brought us back up.
Okay. So when we remove the, the unaccounted for supplies, that dropped us down for a little bit with the audited numbers, we're back up above twenty-five percent?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah. Then, yeah, I'm, I'm with you on the consensus for debt. And then I just would like to see the numbers from Suzanne. On the mill.
Okay, I found the presentation.
Okay. Anything else? Yeah. Is everybody good? We're square. All right. This meeting is over then. Thank you. Thank you, Rusty.
Thank you.
And Sally.
You're welcome.